I was pretty sure.
Which one was it?
I was.
That, is that it?
This would be Bill.
That one?
I refuse to sign anymore after this stack.
Not any more.
You see the stack?
I bet they are, I'm gonna find some.
Oh, it's at six o'clock. Let's go ahead and do that. Let's go ahead and call the meeting in order, please. This is the City of Canton Council Meeting, November the twenty first, two thousand and nineteen. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow. Father, we are so thankful for tonight, for everyone that's here. We ask that you be with us. We ask that we also give thanks for the coming Thanksgiving season and Christmas season. And it is such a beautiful town that's, we have now and all the lights and Christmas. People are so excited. We ask that you be with our public safety people and each one of us. Help us make the right decisions tonight. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Glad to see a crowd here tonight. Everybody's got a special interest, I hope. The next item is to consider approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Oh, Ms. McGraw.
I would like to request moving H, G, and H to the top of Old Business.
We'll lose our crowd. Probably.
Y'all stay for the whole thing, won't you?
It's the annexation and zoning property.
Yes.
Okay, and that, that, we'll move that up at the beginning. And I guess that will end up, okay, I'm gonna leave it G and H, but at the beginning and then we'll start back with A. We're not gonna change the other, all the others. Okay. Any other changes? Mr. Astis.
I'd like to request to remove from the consent agenda seven C for further discussion.
E?
Ah, C.
C.
The discussion about the Historical Society funding.
And will that go at the end of Old Business?
Yes. Which one was that? Seven, C. C, I got you, okay. Okay.
Eight J.
Okay, well, when we get to the consent agenda, I will pull that one, pull that one off at that time, okay? And then we'll just discuss it a- after we vote on it, all the others. Any other changes to be made? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
For moved second.
Okay, Mr. Yawn made the motion, Mr. Goodwin seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. We have lots of guests and visitors tonight, but we also have a recognition of succeeding supervisor training, train, uh, TNDs. And Lori Waters, are you gonna handle that? Okay.
She's, she's gonna help me with this.
Lori Waters, human resources person. What?
Uh, Lori's gonna help me with this.
Oh, you're gonna do that.
For those of, for those of you in the audience, we have been sending our supervisors in the city through a training with the University of Georgia's Carl Vinson Institute of Government. It's a series of classes that we've been able to host here in the city with other jurisdictions to provide them information on, uh, and, and, and training on things such as resource management, working with staff. I believe time management's in there. There's discussions about ethics and other things, and so it's a wonderful program. Uh, and this is our second class that we've put through as a city. We have six employees that will be receiving their certificates tonight. We will start with Ms. Kelly Penley. Kelly works in our Public Works Department and, and handles the administrative operations of that group. We have Luke Jenkins, Luther Jenkins, also works down at Public Works, Streets Department. Derek Gardena is down in our Public Works Department. Ms. Wanda Floyd, who works down in Utilities, is not with us tonight. She's, uh, under the weather. Scott Buckner, uh, if you, if you drive through any of the city's intersections with traffic signals, he's the one that makes sure those are, are working properly and keeps our buildings heating and air working and everything else. He's just a jack of all trades. And Ms. Lori Waters, who's our HR Director, is also receiving her stuff.
Congratulations to each of you. Okay, we have a proclamation this evening, recognizing and presenting a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. And I think, you know, it is important, uh, small businesses are really what, make up, uh, the far majority of the, of the sales and so forth within our country. But whereas the government of Canton, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety nine point seven percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for sixty four point nine percent of the new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand and eighteen. And where small businesses employ forty seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And where is ninety four percent of consumers in the United States value the contribution small businesses make in their community. And whereas ninety six percent of consumers who plan to shop on Small Business Saturday said the day inspires them to go to the small, independently owned retailer or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried. Whereas ninety two percent of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy holiday shopping season. And whereas fifty nine percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year. And whereas Canton, Georgia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, the FOI Gene Hovgud mayors, uh, City of Canton do hereby proclaim November the thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of all, uh, our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Okay? Chief Mayor Phil, I believe we have, uh, you, you have some presentation here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Start out tonight, I'd like to introduce one of our new officers. Officer Ben Johnson is, uh, he was sworn in with us Thursday. Excuse me, he comes to us with four years of experience from my old alma mater of Cobb County Police. He, uh, is a graduate of, uh, that little school down in Athens. I can't remember the name. The University of Georgia. He, uh, he started yesterday actually riding with a field training officer. And, uh, already the field training officer has told me that he's gonna be abbreviated, of course, which means he'll only have to ride twenty shifts with a field training officer as opposed to forty shifts. So he comes here with a great reputation from Cobb County. He has a great mindset. He wanted to get back to more community policing. He grew up around in this area and said that he just feels more at home here and that's why he wanted to make the trade here. Uh, and so we're, we're very excited to have him, Officer Ben Johnson. On the UCR reporting for the month of October, our violent crimes for the year are up sixteen percent. Our burglaries forced for the year are down twelve percent and were down a hundred percent for the month, from the month between September and October. The non-forced burglaries are down forty, almost forty-three percent. Our shop liftings are down almost fifty-seven percent, and that's for the year. Our motor, motor vehicle thefts are down fifteen percent for the year. In all, our total property crimes under UCR reporting are down almost twenty-six percent. All crimes reported, that would be the violent crimes and property crimes, for the year are down thirteen percent. Our traffic accidents for the year are down three percent. Our calls for service for the year are up four percent and were up five percent for the month between September and October. Our traffic citations for the year are up nine point eight seven percent and for the month between September and October were up twenty-eight percent. On our crime report, once again in October, and I think we've seen this the last two months, in October, the, the leading crime was theft by taking or larcenies. A lot of them were, were small larcenies. Uh, and again, as I mentioned the last month, a lot of them were people leaving things outside, not securing them, and them being stolen. We also had six of the sixteen cases, thirty-eight percent, were in our apartment complexes. And some of those were, we had people that were, uh, saying they were maintenance to get inside apartments and then end up taking electronics and, and they weren't maintenance. The, the residents didn't really make any check before allowing them in and then noticed once they were gone that some of the electronics were gone. And as I said, our traffic accidents were down, uh, for the month, beginning at the beginning of this month, we did a community outreach where we were in the parking lots of the different retail stores, knowing that the holiday season is coming. We were out into, in the parking lots, putting out the safe car pamphlets and talking to citizens about locking their cars up and being careful in the shopping centers. That's all I have.
Any question? Good report, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you have in your agenda package the minutes, draft minutes for November the seventh meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Astis made the motion, Mr. Goodwin seconded that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Uh, ten minute public input, uh, period. Brad Fisher, you, you, once you, you, if, this since you're on the agenda, you wanna wait to make your comments at that point, if you would? Yeah, okay. Uh, I think that'd probably work out better since that'd be the point of discussion of that one. Mr. Weaver, Thomas Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta hearing, Georgia. Uh, as we do approach and as we are in fact approaching Thanksgiving, there is much to be thankful for, and I wanted to echo the sentiments that was initially addressed by Councilmember Goodwin in the opening prayer and invocation. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor for all of our different telephone conversations that we've had throughout your tenure, even at times where we have agreed to disagree. I still found them to be beneficial, none the same. And also to council for all the times that you fielded those calls. Thank you. To Mr. Peppers, I mean, his administration has been better to good to me and that can be said on many different occasions, on many different things. Thank you. And also to Mr. Ingram, uh, I'm, I'm glad to see that some of those remarks that I had made from last week, uh, was, were looked into, especially with the fee council, uh, excuse me, not the fee council, but the fee schedule in regards to the alcohol server permit issue. And last and certainly not least, uh, Mr. Hooper and members of his team, I don't know if they've left, but, uh, Mr. Hooper and members of his team fielded a concern that I had today in regards to a portion of the road on Marietta Road that had actually fallen in. It looks like a piece right there above this sewer pipe. Well, tis the season anyway. So, uh, hopefully that can be looked into, none the same. But thank you as always and thank you for everything that you've done and, and indeed now is the time of the year to be thankful for everything that the city has done for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas, for saying those words. You're very kind, thank you. Okay. Consent agenda, uh, we're gonna pull item C off, which is the approval of the Hotel Motel Tax Fund Amendment, um, for a discussion later, but I will read the others and if anyone want, wants any of these taken off for further discussion, we'll be happy to do so. Item A, approval of annual update to capital improvements plan and five-year short-term work plan. Item B, approval of proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinance Development Code, chapters one oh six and one oh seven, uh, flood plain regulations. Item C, we're pulling off. Item D, approval of occupational tax phase two recommendations. Item E, approval of City of Canton Municipal Court Government, uh, governmental probation agreement. Uh, does anybody want that pulled off so she can read all, read that? It's kinda lengthy, but we, we've got all night. Okay, we'll leave it on there then, okay. Item F, approval of easy court pay, pay name change. Uh, item G, approval of street maintenance for streets in Laurel Canyon. Uh, Pod Five, Lonely Phase Six. Item H, approval of certified city of ethics. Which all these, of course, we talked about in depth at the, uh, last meeting. So now we will, we will, uh, consider the approval. Mr. Astis, I think, wanted to discuss the approval of the Hotel Motel Tax Fund Amendment.
Discuss that?
Yes, we'll, we'll go ahead and discuss that and move forward with it.
Um, my only concern was, uh, the grant being requested was fifteen thousand, um, which was a shortfall of the money that was already spent. I think the, my only concern was, given the amount of, I guess, uh, contributions this year that we've given, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about overindexing too much with the Historical Society. So that's my two cents about why I wanted to pull that off.
Anyone else?
I, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I, uh, I think this is a good use of hotel motel tax because that, that tax is limited to pretty much, um, tourism. And this is what, we, we have this, now we have this Historical Society, uh, venue downtown Canton. I believe that the, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar contribution that we gave was used to fix a road that we had given them that had to be fixed so that they would have some parking. And what they've asked for now is to reimburse them for some, some funds that they've used to get up and ready with the Welcome Center. So I make a motion, we approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that, uh, is there a second? Ms. Wilson made the motion, Mr. Goodwin seconded. Any other discussion about it? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
All members voting for the motion, except for Mr. Astis voting no. And we need to go back and, and vote for the remainder of the consent item agendas. Do we have a motion to, uh, to approve those items as read? Mr. Goodwin made the motion, Ms. Yawn seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion. Okay. Okay, under Old Business, item G and H, this is the case, uh, annexation of, uh, seven acres of four parcels, AX nineteen oh nine dash zero zero one. And zoning case, uh, nineteen oh nine zero zero one. I think we need, uh, discuss those items, uh, in, in conjunction with one another, really not necessarily separately because they, they're, the zoning certainly tied to the annexation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members, uh, there is an annexation request to Annex seven point zero three acres. Uh, more, uh, described as Cherokee County Tax Map fourteen and twenty-two parcels, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six. These properties are located off of and along Teague Drive. It is, uh, bounded by, uh, city property on, if you will, all four sides other than, uh, Teague Drive.
Okay, we have, uh, any discussion on this?
I have a question.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on the annexation first or the zoning first?
Annexation.
We've, we've, we've discussed that. We're gonna have to keep, well, annex, you, you can't zone something that's not inside the city, first of all.
Okay.
But I, I, we, I think we have to make sure that, uh, the applicant is, is, is willing to take the zoning that we put on it before we, uh, before we annex it. Otherwise, you know, it could really create a problem. Uh, there's a couple of things, uh, that, um, concerned me about, uh, this particular one, uh, with the conditions that were placed on it. And, and one, of course, it is an island that really needs to be, that needs to be corrected. It has commercial zoning on three sides.
Did you want me to make a presentation on the zoning, uh?
I thought you did.
Well, I talked about the annexation.
Go ahead.
I didn't really talk about the zoning case.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, associated with the proposed annexation was a zoning or a request for the same four parcels land located off Teague Drive. A public hearing was held before, uh, the Canton Planning Commission, as well as City Council, held a public hearing in, uh, regards, uh, to the zoning. The applicant requested general commercial zoning for the four parcels of land. Uh, Canton Planning Commission recommended approval of general commercial zoning with three conditions. Number one, provide a thirty-five foot buffer where the commercial property butts residentially zoned properties. Condition number two, following uses should be excluded from the allowed uses, hotel, motel, and restaurants. And third condition is recommended by the Planning Commission, install a noise-reducing berm along River Point Parkway.
Okay.
I'm here to answer any questions?
I make a motion?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Goodwin.
I don't have any questions, but has anybody else got questions?
I have some questions.
Okay, well, we, if we go ahead and deal with the motion and then we'll open it up for any discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Goodwin made a motion to?
Anex to, into the city.
Annex to the city and?
Keep it general, GC.
GC, okay. Do we have a second? We have a second.
Is that with the current, um, conditions?
No.
So just as is?
As general commercial, okay, okay.
No conditions, got it.
All right, now we'll open it up for any, any discussion. We'll have a motion in a second. You go ahead.
I'd like to say that I, I need the conditions on it, um, to protect the homeowners. And, uh, I would like to condition it further with, um, saying that council would have to approve whatever hotel the developers want to bring in and restaurant to make sure that this is, uh, community-friendly, uh, retail, commercial.
Well, that, uh, that, that would involve, uh, coming back before the Planning Commission, if it has a, no matter what hotel you approve, it would have to go back through the Planning Commission with public hearings there and here before the council, before it could be changed. Is that what you understand? Okay. The issues that I have basically is the fact that it is an island and that it's on general commercial on three sides. And the real, the real concern I have is that if, if we condition this, that is such that the developer, uh, doesn't want to do it, the job, then my guess is they'll go to the county and the county will zone it general commercial. The county has already zoned zero lot line just above that property off Highway Five. And if, if the county were to zone that, uh, it be in an unincorporated area, then, uh, we would still get the whatever issues that may be involved there, but it wouldn't be inside the city. And it, and it is basically an island that needs to be corrected as well. And I'm a little concerned about the, uh, legality of, uh, of, uh, how easily it might be overturned in court. But my guess is it probably wouldn't go, wouldn't take us to court on it, it'd just go to the county and get general commercial. But that's, that's just what I, I would fear, I guess, if, if we, if we just do something that they wouldn't, uh, couldn't accept. Yes, ma'am?
I have some questions that I'd like to ask Mr. Patton to help me with. And one reason I'd like to get some of this in open council so that we can all understand, we have a lot of beautiful red shirts out there and I wanna be sure that they understand what, what we're doing or what we're trying to do. As the mayor just said, the four plots that we're looking to annex are all surrounded by general commercial, right? And it's been that way since River Point was established, right?
There are, on the north side, the west side, and the south side are properties that are zoned GC general commercial. The property to the east is part of a large master plan development at a Shoals. The master plan, uh, does reflect commercial, but it does specify that that commercial is neighborhood commercial.
Okay, okay, thank you for that. Now, I want to, um, I wanna go back to what the, um, Planning Commission, they recommended that all large, that all hotels and restaurants be excluded. Now, I think that, I, I believe that it was motels that they were talking about and not hotels. Can you answer that? It seems that we had some discussion and that large hotels that were, nice hotels, were not excluded. It was, the, the fear is that there would be another long-stay motel, like there already is there. And that was what was worrying the folks at River Point. Is that right?
Well, uh, the Planning Commission recommended, uh, no hotels, motels, uh, they're classified the same. Within our Unified Development Code, we do not specifically break. Within our unified development code, we do not specifically break out and define extended stay hotels, uh, hotel motel, uh, that sort of thing. Staff is working on some, uh, possible amendments to address some of these issues because there are a couple of hotels out there that, uh, have been converted to, uh, extended stay. But, uh, in our zoning ordinance, we do not break out or differentiate, uh, these various types of hotels or motels.
Right. And I think that I understand that the developer has, has said that they will not have any extended stay motels as part of their project, right?
They, uh, did, uh, did not indicate that at the planning commission meeting. They indicated that they had no intentions to move forward with development at the current time.
Right, but I believe that they had a discussion with the folks at River Point in which they told them that there would not be any, any, um, long-stay motels considered in their project. Is that, I mean, can somebody verify that?
I see some head nods out there that that's, they appear to be agreeing to that.
I read the correspondence that said they would not.
I'm not sure that you can put a condition, if you will, uh, no extended stay since it's not addressed in our zoning ordinance.
So we could, that, that could be a condition.
That would be something that would have to be addressed through a covenant with the property owner.
But it could be a condition.
I'm not sure how you could place that condition since you don't define the extended stay in the zoning ordinance.
So the, so the, the question that always comes up about extended stay is what defines extended stay? If I check into a hotel that has a daily rate or even a weekly rate and I decide that I want to stay there for six months, as long as, as long as I'm paying the rate?
Right. But I don't think that's what the, the residents are talking about.
Well, so, so having said that, I don't think in the zoning side you can condition extended stay, but I think the city can control extended stay through the business license.
Okay, okay. That sounds reasonable.
Because ultimately you can, for instance, with hotels, the state of Georgia recognizes extended stay as being after thirty days of continuous stay.
Right.
So, for instance, you collect hotel taxes on the first thirty days of stay.
Right.
You could require on business license that they not allow anyone stay in the same room path, so that they're checked out and checked back in.
And, and that sounds reasonable. And I, I don't think that, that the residents were concerned with, with that. I think what they're concerned with is more like the Motel Six and the one that, I forget which the one is across the street by the Waffle House. Those are the ones that I think bother them. They, I don't think a nice hotel would bother them and I believe that they've had that understanding with the, with the developer. Another question is, um, you know, this is gonna be a huge development if it's approved. Where is, where's the traffic gonna come in and out? Where the, are there more than one exit and entrance? Tell me more about that.
Well, this annexation zoning is for seven acres. Their site plan reflects hotels, some office, some restaurants, things of that nature. Access is, uh, proposed to, uh, come off of River Point Parkway, which from, uh, Old Highway Five, uh, is a divided median, uh, boulevard roadway. That roadway is proposed to be extended into that, um, master planned development at Ewah Shoals. And, uh, the conditions of approval with Ewah Shoals is that it will extend inside of that master planned development as a divided median, uh, boulevard, uh, roadway, uh, to a point. And I believe the DRI, uh, and, uh, the Greta had, uh, recommended, uh, that it, uh, could go to, uh, two lanes after it, uh, got to the back where there were, I think, four hundred residential units, uh.
So there'll be upgrades on that, on that little road that goes in now?
Well, I wouldn't call it a little road that goes in now, it's a divided median, uh, four-lane road.
But it, but it will extend?
Yes.
Per the Ewah Shoals master plan?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Their access, they'll have to extend the road, uh, beyond where the paving ends now.
Right.
To access the seven acres.
Understanding the development of this size, that a lot of clear cutting has to be done, have, do we have any idea of what kind of planning will be required whenever the clear cutting comes through? Is there gonna be required plantings to replace what is already cut?
With any development that comes into the city of Canton, uh, with their construction plans, they have to submit a tree count survey. They have to do recompense for the trees that are removed, uh, based upon, uh, that tree count and they have to recompense or, uh, pay money into the city's tree fund. There are landscaping requirements that, uh, go along with, uh, certain types of, uh, commercial developments, uh, as well as if, uh, uh, there, uh, if you keep a condition about the buffer.
So we, and, and, you know, those of us on council are familiar with that. I just want to be sure that the residents here and the developer heard that as well. And I know the developer's already aware of that. Um, what about construction traffic? Are we, is there any way construction traffic can be limited to other areas other than the, the road that goes, the, the, uh, parkway that goes down now? Will it kind of come off Ball Ground Highway or Teague Drive?
They, uh, would have to go through the county to get approval, uh, to, uh, limit all construction, uh, off of, uh, Teague and York, uh, Drive, uh, because those are, uh, county roads.
So in order to do that, the developer would need to get permission from the county?
Yes, to limit, uh, the construction, uh, traffic that direction.
Right, can, whenever you're looking, whenever you're meeting with the developer, could you suggest that that be done?
Uh, depends upon what kind of road, uh, is proposed to go into the development. Uh, uh, you know, they, uh, could put a four-lane road in, uh, as a part of their proposal. You can certainly, uh, make that a condition of approval, uh, but if the county won't give, uh, approval for Teague and York to be, uh, construction, then, you know, how else are they gonna, uh, get in and out to move forward with the development?
Right, I think there's some construction traffic already in the residential area that comes off another road, right? That's already, the residential area that's already being, being built right now.
Uh, you talking about an unincorporated Cherokee County?
That's on further up, uh, I think.
Are they, they're not come, they're coming off probably Old Ball Ground Highway?
No, there's no access to that proposed residential development. Their site plan reflects an access point, but, uh, part of, uh, this annexation would be a roadway into the commercial property, but it would also provide access to that residential development to, to the north. The site along Old Ball Ground, uh, Highway, uh, that, uh, was approved on the site plan by the county, uh, is gonna require some twenty-foot, uh, retaining walls and relocation of, uh, sixteen or eighteen-inch water line. And, uh, they, uh, are looking at bringing a road out on River Point as well as second ingress egress through Teague Drive and York, part of that unincorporated county development.
Right. I do want to point out a couple of things in a letter that we received from the developer who says that they are committed to restrict any extended stay motel. So we do have that in writing from the developer. Also, um, the, uh, the neighborhood mentioned that in Canton Ford, that the area was, was, um, looked at to be neighborhood commercial instead of general commercial. I think that Ewah Shoals supports the LCI initiative in the Canton Comprehensive Plan that says that it would be general commercial, correct?
Well, uh, the character area would, uh, would support general commercial as well as neighborhood commercial. Within the Ewah Shoals master planned property, the commercial pod within that master plan that city council approved in two thousand and four, I think it was, does reflect that that commercial would be neighborhood commercial. The other three sides of the seven acres is currently zoned general commercial already in the city limits of Canton.
And that is. Well, I was surprised when I came in tonight and received a notice of constitutional challenge from the developer. Uh, I hope that's not getting the cart before the horse here. Uh, we haven't voted on it yet. We already have a challenge, a constitutional challenge, but just wanted to point that out, that we hadn't voted yet, so we.
Well, that, that is, that is just to preserve rights.
Pardon?
That happens in every case, y'all don't always see them.
That standard procedure?
I, I hadn't seen it until I got here tonight.
Every zoning case there, that is done because if they don't give us that, legally they can't, uh, challenge any decision you make.
Okay. There's just one other thing I wanted to point out and then I'm through. This particular development would put no, no hardship on Canton's water or on Canton's sewer. And they have, the developer has said that they will put in a pump station in order to make sure that the sewer goes into Cherokee County and not Cherokee, and not Canton Sewer.
If you recall at the work session, I did mention that, uh, all of this area, the Walmart, uh, the automotive dealerships, Liberty Boulevard, that area, even though it is Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority service area, and that service is provided by the Water Authority for water and sewer, the sewer does flow into the city of Canton's system. Uh, the applicant, uh, did state at the public hearing that, uh, if it, uh, was an issue or a problem, that they would work with the Water Authority in regards to a lift station and reversing flow to go to a, uh, treatment plant in unincorporated Cherokee County.
Okay, thanks for answering my questions very well. Um, it seems that, um, one of the big issues with the neighborhood was with the motel and, and they're concerned about crime around there and they did not want anything like that. And so we do have stipulation in writing that that will not be one of the issues there. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Me.
Ms. McGrew?
Mayor, you had talked about them going to the county if we don't zone it, um, the way they are asking. What protections would we offer that would make it right for us to approve the zoning?
Well, I, uh, yeah, as, uh, protection against what?
I don't know.
Well, I, that's, that's what I don't know either, exactly.
Well, you seem at, uh, that we should zone it and annex it, but, um...
That's what the, that's what the applicants asked for.
Right.
And, and I gave about four reasons here that I have a concern. First of all, it's an island that we, we're gonna end up, you know, serving around it if it's not, uh, annexed in. And we've been looking in other areas where we have the opportunity to close up an island to do so. It's zoned already GC on three sides, which means that from a legal standpoint, if they take us to court on that, in my opinion, it's slam dunk. They're gonna get something, they, they'll get it anyway. But my guess is they'd probably go to the county and get GC zoning and then we get no tax dollars off of it at all. And, and so, you know, and yet we would still have any issues that were there.
They're not going to be affecting our water and sewer, they're gonna remain with the county.
Yeah, well, that's what I understood.
So what other, um, services would they take from us?
Well, you, you, you're gonna have, where's the police gonna go? That, that's patrolling that neighborhood. Are they gonna go, uh, you're gonna have to wait for the sheriff's department or, or what?
It would be county, so yes.
I know, I know, and it's surrounded by city, so the county's gonna have to go through the city to get there.
So what about the buffer, um, for the community? Is Mr. Goodman, um, not asking for that buffer and berm?
How do you have to ask Mr. Goodman that? I, uh, that was one of the three conditions.
There were four conditions, weren't there?
Three conditions. Number one was a provide a thirty-five foot buffer, uh, where commercial property butts residential property. Uh, the second one was, uh, the exclusion of, uh, the two, uh, uses listed in general commercial, which was, uh, hotel motel restaurants. The third proposed condition was install a noise reduction, uh, berm along River Point Parkway.
So what is our buffer requirement now between commercial and residential?
Well, uh, the residential property that is to the north is unincorporated Cherokee County and that's a fifty-foot buffer.
Okay, so we're gonna have at least a fifty-foot buff, buffer right now?
They're, uh, well, they've asked for approval for thirty.
You're saying there's already, there's already a buffer.
I'm saying our regs already, uh, require a certain buffer between general commercial and, and residential properties.
Yes, sir, and that varies, but, uh, to the north, the unincorporated, uh, that is a fifty-foot buffer. They, uh, requested that that be, uh, reduced to thirty-five feet through this annexation zoning process. Planning commission agreed with that.
If we don't stipulate something, uh, we won't have a leg to stand on if, um, someone decides to take out the buffer. And I think the berm is a good idea to protect noise from commercial to the residential.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, we have a motion on the table. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, um, just thinking through all this, I, I think, you know, this is certainly, I appreciate the concerns with the county, um, not being as stringent and, and this could just flip over to the county regardless of the inequities there that might, might result. But, um, you know, I think what I struggle with is, um, mostly just the restrictions on the restaurants and, and hotels. Um, I think that this area could benefit from that. Um, and again, I think the dialogue we're having when I say hotels is, is the stipulations that we've all talked about, you know, certainly not.
We have it in writing from them that they will not.
So I, I think that, um, you know, I guess, sounds like there may be, um, some, some dialogue to, to reinstate. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask you to reconsider your, your motion to include the two, uh, the, the two, um, restrictions of, of one and three, the berm and the thirty-five foot buffer, but.
I have one question about the berm. When I went and looked out there, it was my understanding that the berm as proposed would go into where the road would actually run normally when they extended the road. Is that correct or incorrect?
That would be incorrect. Uh, any, uh, noise-reducing berm would have to be outside of the proposed, uh, extension of the road right away.
I mean, as the, as it's logically would go right now, they would have to move it from where it would logically extend, correct?
Well, they're gonna have to extend the roadway, uh, from where the paving ends now to, uh, get access to the seven acres. That's gonna be part of, uh, the, uh, construction plans.
Yeah. Not quite my question, but, okay. I was just, it was my understanding that that particular issue was gonna be logistically difficult. Is, do you not see that that would be the case or am I, was I misinformed or misunderstood?
Any, any developer's gonna tell you it's gonna be logistically, uh, impossible and that sort of thing. Uh, there are a lot of, uh, berms, uh, that can, uh, be seen throughout, uh, metro Atlanta adjacent to roadways, on the backside of residential subdivisions that protect those homeowners from noise from, uh, streets. There are berms that are contained within commercial properties, uh, as well throughout metro Atlanta.
I just wanted to clear that up.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. Uh, your motion, uh, I don't, I'm not sure when, when Mr. Estes mentioned, uh, the other conditions, what did you say?
I said, I, as he was, I'm not, I'm not changing my motion.
Oh, okay. So your motion is that it be approved general commercial, uh, with no stipulations other than what, of course, the, the, has committed to. And you seconded the motion, all right? We'll take a vote now.
I want a roll call vote, please.
Absolutely.
If we, if we, if we doesn't vote, we can make another motion, right?
Sure. Okay, Ms. McGrew?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Okay, motion fails, okay? Do we have another motion?
I make a motion. I make a motion that we approve with the two conditions for a berm and for, uh-
Thirty-five foot buffer.
Thirty-five foot buffer.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all members voting for the motion. Thank you. I guess, uh, that was for, you know, we need to make sure the developer can live with that before we annex his property yet.
Right, I mean, I, that, we, we didn't do what we said we were gonna do, which was annex first. So, so now you know what the zoning's gonna be.
Are, are those conditions obvious that, uh, the council wishes to place on those acceptable to the devel- to the developer before we move forward? We'll give you a minute. Uh, Ken, would you-
Yes, I have a question.
He, he has a question, uh, and needed to go that route. Uh, Jeff, talk, talk to Ken there, because we've had, really already had our public hearing on this. If you wanna talk to him, we can deal with it that way.
They're in agreement with the two conditions, what, uh, the applicant and their legal representative indicated.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the annexation.
Motion to the-
Ms. McGrew made the motion, Mr. Good, uh, Goodwin seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's do this one more time on the zoning to G's, uh, general commercial with the stipulations of the berm and the, uh, thirty-five foot setback with the residential property. Okay? Motion, is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Have a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Estes made the second, Ms. McGrew sec- uh, made the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you.
I think we're, I think, uh, Mr. Bray's letter for a constitutional challenge, we're using the land for the highest and best purpose, so.
Yeah, you know, I, I-
To everybody.
That, that came in a little bit late, I guess, but normally, that is presented at the Planning Commission too, you know?
Right.
They just protect and they're right if, if we do something that affects their property with, that they don't like. They, they have a, a, a right to do something legally. Okay. Now, we're gonna go back to item A under old business. Uh, discussion and possible action on sanitary sewer capacity policy in lieu of a moratorium. Ms. McGrew, you wanna start with that?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, all members voting for the motion. Uh, discussion, possible, uh, action of the public alley abandonment request. Uh, this one, uh, Brad wanted to, uh, Brad Fisher wanted to make some comments on that one, uh, since that is his request there, and, uh, you have this plat here that shows that alleyway off of East Marietta Street that, uh, that brought tonight. So, Brad, you wanna explain it?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, I own all the property down the alleyway, uh, except for the first property coming off of East Marietta. And the only use would be to go into my property and that first, uh, house, which is four seventy-one East Marietta. And I would like for the, uh, council and the mayor and everybody else, uh, to, uh, abandon the alley. The, uh, everything behind it is, on the other side of it, is the parking lot of the police station, and to the west side is the, is still the city property with the, uh, Kudzu.
Bobby, you wanna weigh in on this, because I know there's some issue about, you know, if, if we were to abandon that, normal procedure would be that half of that, uh, alley would go to the, what, Carol S. Smith property?
Yeah.
And half to the other.
There's two steps when we abandon roads. You abandon it first, so that maybe the public doesn't have a right to drive on it anymore. The second is disposing of the property after you've abandoned the public's right.
Right.
So, when you, when you dispose of it, you have to offer it to the property owner who abuts it. Now, we could offer the whole width of it because we're the other side. But we can't offer, when we, when we, if we were to do a deed, it would be broken up in chunks, 'cause there's two different property owners. That, now, that first property owner could say, "Well, I don't care about getting it." And then, but then you would technically have to go through this, what we did for that little property on West Marietta, and go through some sort of process. When it's an abandoned right-of-way, there's a different sale process. You're allowed to, you have to offer it to the abutted property owner, and you're allowed to negotiate for the price.
Did, did we, have we notified that, uh, owner of that property that this is up for consideration?
Oh, you didn't do it. I saw a copy of it in a, in the agenda packet, so, copy of notice sent out.
Did, did we send that, uh, who sent that out?
Did I not see that? I thought I saw it in the-
I don't know, I didn't, you didn't see it either?
I also sent a certified letter because of my cup application, and I have been on the phone with Carol Smith. Uh, now, a little while ago, uh, I never really considered the fact, uh, that she wouldn't, uh, give me a right-of-way. Uh, my intention was to, uh, put a driveway from East Marietta all the way back, but I do understand that that piece of property would have to go to her, and I can deal with her directly on that issue. I, I am not opposed to y'all moving forward to abandoning it and giving that part to her, and then she and I can deal with it on another level. Uh, you know, since I do own all the other properties except for the garden lot, uh, and we are about to hopefully, uh, come with our townhouse development, which is coming up to y'all, uh, in December, um, I can access my property from the other property that I already own. We'll just have to dig the hill down level versus coming up the road and having it on the hill. But, I'm not opposed to going ahead and, uh, you know, making everything one level to access that property. So, you know, any concern that I brought up about it, uh, please disregard, 'cause I'll deal with Carol Smith, and if she, she and I can't work out that easement, then I'll access it from my other property on West Marietta.
What did you, uh, did you tell us at the last meeting what you thought the, uh, s- sales prices would be on those properties?
Yeah, uh, well, I did at the Planning Commission. I really wasn't sure, and what I told the Planning Commission was, uh, it would be between four hundred and five hundred thousand, but it's probably closer to four hundred. It all depended on the hydrology study and the cost of development.
Now, is that for one town, town home?
Yes, and there'll be five.
And how many square feet would that be, just curious?
It'd be two thousand square feet of living, and then the, there's a south, there's a thousand square feet, uh, in the garage, but on the backside of the garage, there's another three or four hundred square feet, uh, that most likely would be made into a living. So, we're, we're basically looking at twenty-four to twenty-five hundred square feet.
Okay, uh, Ms. Wilson?
But the issue before us is only if the city's willing to abandon what they own, right?
Correct.
That's all that's before us.
Yeah, just, just the alleyway. The, uh, the cup.
That's all before us now, right?
Right.
Yes.
That we abandon what we own?
Yes.
Not anything that has to do with the other property owner?
No.
Well, it, it, it is, and I, I don't think we did give notice, so I don't think you can actually vote on it tonight.
Okay.
The thing I saw was, I think, his letter, uh, requesting it. So, um, you would just have to direct staff to go ahead and notify the property owners, which is Mr. Fisher and Ms. Smith.
Honestly, I thought we, I thought that's what we did last time, but let us know.
Well, I thought so too, but apparently, nobody sent the notice, so.
Okay. Um, is it, is that the, uh, pleasure of the council, that they go ahead and notify that property owner, so that property owner will have an opportunity to come in and voice any objection if they choose to do so?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all right.
Do, do we have any use for that alley? Okay, that was my other question.
Okay, so, so what will be the timeframe on this now, if, if-
Well, we can do it at the next meeting. I mean, we, there's no particular timeframe in notifying.
Well, that would give them, what, two weeks' notice if we go ahead and get something out there. So, staff will do that, right? Ken or somebody?
Mr. Green has done it in the book pass, so.
We will. My understanding, uh, was the work session count last of the notification.
Oh, sorry. I didn't understand that, so.
Our office, certainly, are hitting notification now.
Okay. And, and, and that, that we, now, will that we, will that be a public hearing, Bobby, or not?
No, no, we don't have to have a hearing. We just have to notify everybody.
I think I asked that question last time, too. I think the same question. Okay.
All right, so, now, I, I will be going to Thailand for three weeks on the twenty-seventh, so if, if there's any need for me to come back, go for anything, okay? And, uh, I do have someone coming on my behalf in December for the cup.
Okay.
Application.
Well, that would be, uh, December the fifth, I believe?
Yeah, I think, I think it's the fifth and the eighteenth.
What?
The, the two Thursdays are the December fifth and thirteenth. Do I have that right?
Dec- December the fifth, yeah, a couple, uh, weeks, but, but we could act on it.
You could act on, on the fifth, yes.
Since it's already been on this one to act on, and we're moving it forward.
Yes.
We could technically act on it in two weeks.
Okay.
On the fifth.
Do we have to do anything with the disposal?
Well, that, I mean, that, uh, we have usually, because that's the point. Um, it's really sort of a title issue usually, some, that the property owners will want to have title to the alley. Sometimes, people accept the abandonment as kind of making them own it, but technically, they need a quick lane deed from us. So, I can go ahead and prepare those too.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Is that kinda clear?
That's perfect.
Kinda clear?
Unless you wanna go ahead and vote tonight, and then that's even more perfect. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Discussion and possible action to approve municipal fee schedule. Mr. Nathan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, at the last work session, uh, you had asked that I prepare a comparison on the changes, the few changes that we, uh, that we're asking for on the new fee schedule. And I sent an email to you, and I apologize, I thought I attached it to the agenda, but in lieu of that, I, I presented another copy of each of you. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have on, on some of those changes.
And this, this sheet is only those that change from what they are now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, all, most all the fees remain the same, but this one page you have here are, are where any changes were made. Does anybody have any comments or question on those? All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Gonna have a motion by Mr. Yorn, seconded by Mr. Estes. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action on recommendation of Planning Commission to study traffic flow patterns around Cannon Park.
Thank you. Um, this is, this item is for the consideration from the Planning Commission for the, uh, reconfiguration of traffic around Cannon Park. Um, we discussed this at the work session, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Let, let me ask a question. Uh, it, it's my understanding that, uh, you know, we previously had this study that addressed that to some degree, and if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that that study did not indicate that it would be a significant improvement. It, it, and is that a fair statement?
It, it did not necessarily say that it would be an improvement, but it also didn't say that it was a bad idea.
So, your answer is yes?
Yes.
The cost to do that is, I, I believe I saw somewhere around thirty thousand-
Thirty thousand, yes, sir.
To make those adjustments?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I noticed, you know, number one, it says that we're a recommendation to do a study. I think Bethany did, she's already done a study, right?
Well, there was a study done.
Well, so, the-
As part of something else.
The original recommendation that was that we did is a, a study on it, but the study had actually already been completed.
Right, yeah. But, but what I wanted to suggest is that because it's gonna eliminate some parking places, and because we think we probably have a parking deck pretty soon, I wonder if we'd wanna wait until the parking deck was in before we, we read, readjusted the traffic flow there, since we're gonna lose, how many, four parking places?
So, with the, the way that I did the cost estimate, it would not have, it would not eliminate any parking spaces in that area. Now, you would have to eliminate one behind the Johns building-
Right.
Because of the sight distance issue. The rest, if you get rid of all the landscape islands, you would not lose any parking spaces.
What, what about those?
Not any of them by the Water Authority?
Yeah, what about that coming out on, uh, on, uh, East Main with those two cars parking in front of the Water Authority there?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's, I'd have to look exactly at the, the sight distance around those cars. Uh, it's not near the same issue as you have at the Johns building, but you may lose, uh, one of those parking spots as well.
Well, that was just a suggestion, that we might wanna wait until we had a parking deck.
I don't mind waiting.
Okay, well, why don't we just table this till, uh, we, uh-
And one of the reasons, as I recall, one of the reasons for changing it to go around that way was so that it would, it would flow to the parking deck. So, seems maybe we might wanna wait.
Okay. We have a motion to, uh, table this?
Postpone indefinitely.
Postpone indefinitely, that sounds good.
Well, I was kinda specific until after the parking deck.
But that's still indefinite.
Yeah, so, okay.
Undefined.
That's all right.
Mr. Yorn made the motion to, uh, postpone indefinitely. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Goodwin seconded the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Got it.
Thank you.
Postpone. Okay. Discussion and possible action on case CUP nineteen oh nine dash zero zero one, requesting approval for two hundred and fifty-two apartment units located at five ninety-one Jacky Moore, uh, Jackie Moore Lane. Uh-
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, uh, Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing in regards to this conditional use permit approval. Uh, Planning Commission did recommend approval of, uh, the conditional use permit with a condition. That condition be that land disturbance permits would not be issued until wastewater treatment plant capability or capacity is available as determined by the City of Canton Utility Engineer utilizing every, average monthly, uh, usage numbers from the treatment plant minus committed capacity. This is, uh, an application, uh, to, uh, allow apartments on seventeen point two acres of land. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, uh, I kinda think, I know, I know we can't vote on them together, but I kinda think you have to consider these two kinda together because, uh, being basically across the street from one another. And, uh, the only concern that I have really about these is, is i- i- is there any way that you could make one intersection there, make the, uh, entrances come out across from one another? I think that, I think that's-
I don't think that that's possible without acquisition of other properties on, uh, the Jackie Moore Lane side of, uh, Marietta Road.
Well, there is a, you know, there's one of those parcels that has got a power easement that goes through it, and it goes through that other parcel on the other side. You know, that parcel with a power easement probably be pretty cheap. Maybe, I don't know. Anyone else have?
I know you hate to ask me, 'cause I've got some questions. Um, on the Jackie Moore, um, uh, ac- case, where are the entrance and exit? Isn't there one on Marietta Highway and one on Highway five?
No, ma'am. Uh, the Jackie Moore property, uh, does it have access to Marietta Highway? What was talked about at the work session is the applicant does own a piece of property between Jackie Moore Lane and Marietta Road, and that a second means of ingress- and that a second means of ingress egress besides the current intersection of Jackie Moore with Marietta Road. They could add a second ingress egress, if you will, further down the hill from the existing Jackie Moore Lane.
Well, I know in residential property.
Does have, I think, two or three ingress egress points from the development itself on to Jackie Moore Lane.
Three?
It's either two or three. I don't have the site plan in front of me. I know it's at least two.
Okay.
On to Jackie Moore.
There's at least two ways to get out of that.
On to Jackie Moore Lane, yes.
And only one to get out on Marietta.
But it all, it all comes out on Marietta Highway.
Right.
Marietta Road.
Yeah.
And somehow it would make sense if you could get those two places on Marietta Highway come out across from one another, if possible at all. That way, then you could always have signalization in the future if you needed it, or, or whatever, and it would be, I suspect, much safer than, than having them come out staggered up through there, but.
I'm not sure that that'd be possible unless there's additional properties acquired, because the next CUP case and where that property is located doesn't line up with the current Jackie Moore Lane intersection, and it also would not line up with the other property down the hill towards Hickory Flat Highway from parcel that they have that could be in form a, if you will, a semicircle of Jackie Moore Lane. So, there's two points of ingress egress for that two hundred and fifty-two unit on to Marietta Road. But the property that is on Marietta Road doesn't line up with any of the current properties owned by the applicant.
It was very difficult to tell from the, from the two packages there, because I'm not sure they were, the photocopies were the same scale and everything. I don't know. It didn't look like it anyway. But on paper, you could line them up.
Well, we talked about, you know, sewer capacities an issue, but the planning commission put a restriction on that. But then I think the, another issue is the traffic. It's like we talked about last time that four hundred and so many apartments is going to be probably about eight hundred cars.
And there was a traffic study done, as well as city staff looked at traffic. The city's adopted a level of service standard as a level of service A. The traffic study indicated the same, that it is an existing level of service A. With these two proposed developments, it would decrease to a level B. And if I'm not mistaken, staff confirmed that it would be a, a reduction to a level B, which is within the acceptable guidelines as adopted by the city.
Who did the traffic study? The city?
Well, Bethany looked into it, because city council asked for additional information. Planning commission asked for additional information, but the applicant supplied a traffic study as well.
Okay, and, and there's, did the, did the applicant also say there's no impact on the school system?
Uh, they have got an agreement, I thought, with the Board of Education in regards to payment for the impacts on the school system.
What, what impact would it be on signalization there? I mean, you go, you're going to have to have one if you're going to be coming out of Jackie Moore Lane, turning back to, toward the city, aren't you?
Uh, if you want to place a condition that Jackie Moore Lane be signaled, uh, signaledized, you can certainly do that. The applicant has already indicated that they're willing to provide a second access point on to Marietta Road and make Jackie Moore Lane a semicircle, so that residents within the seventeen acres of two hundred and fifty-two units have two means of ingress egress on to Marietta Road. And you could make that a condition of approval.
I know it's a little bit late, but it sure would be good to see those two on similarly scaled piece of paper and see how things actually did line up or did not line up, and whether anything would be possible to, uh, to make the intersection with Marietta Highway. We'd be throwing, what, four hundred cars out here and four hundred cars out on the other side?
If you're looking at the package, you have an aerial photograph highlighted both of the piece, pieces of property. And if you'll notice, there are properties between the seventeen acres on Jackie Moore Lane and Marietta Road. Across the road from some of these parcels is where the other CUP application is. It would require additional acquisition of properties to be able to have a true intersection for both of these developments with one signal.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the way I was reviewing this, that, you know, getting more development in that area is another very important part of our city. And having, you know, go from an A to a B isn't necessarily a bad thing. And I think, you know, that, I appreciate the studies that were done independently and by the city. And I think, you know, yes, it is different, but I think, you know, it does, the studies do support the, the capability of that area to support it. You know, again, not diminishing that it would be different.
Anyone else?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Are you, are you, are you also putting in the condition that it's only when sewer capacity is available?
As, as approved by the planning.
Does the sewer policy not now address that? I mean, do we need to make a separate condition now you have an overall policy?
Hasn't that already been committed?
We do have that policy in place.
Availability not already been committed to them?
No.
It hasn't?
No, no plan's been submitted.
So, they would be under the policy?
They'd be under the one we adopted tonight.
Okay.
One thing that council, if I could, Mr. Mayor, one thing that the council did discuss at the work session was the possibility of a condition that the applicant improved Jackie Moore Lane to meet city's street standards. Jackie Moore Lane currently does have fifty-foot right away, but the paving in some areas might not meet the city's standards. So, you might consider that condition to upgrade me, uh, Jackie Moore to meet the city's, uh, street standards.
Because if they don't, we will.
Didn't we also talk about potentially though they may take it private?
We did.
So, we would, we would have to abandon that section of Jackie Moore.
Even if they made it private, they would have to bring it up to the city's street standards.
And part of the problem is there is another residential home that is, has access on to Jackie Moore Lane that is not part of the proposed development that's before you.
Is that the one that's right on the corner of Jackie Moore and Marietta?
Yeah, kind of sits up on the hill, I believe. Wasn't that Ms. Moore's house?
Up on the hill, yeah.
Yes, sir. Their driveway comes out on Jackie Moore before hitting Marietta Road.
You could abandon it and make it private beyond that driveway, though.
That, uh, the way I saw it, it looks like that comes in at an odd angle there. Should that, would it not be better if that were like a ninety-degree angle coming in there?
It's always going to be better to have it at that intersection. Uh, if that's a condition, they're going to have to acquire additional property to realign.
What's the right away there, you know? Does anybody?
Jackie Moore Lane's a fifty-foot right away, and if I'm not mistaken, Marietta Road is maybe a sixty-foot right away.
So, it's, okay.
Marietta Road right away does vary.
Okay.
That's, uh, again, Mr. Mayor, council members, if you're inclined, you can require that other entrance through that other property that the applicant does own that is not part of the conditional use permit approval process. It's a vacant piece of property that sits between Marietta Road and Jackie Moore Lane. They had looked at that as a potential second access point on to Marietta Road for the proposed development.
Did we just, did we determine that these are Class A apartments? Did we just, did we determine that these are Class A apartments?
So, I feel like I'll modify my motion. This is the first time, Mr. Patton, I just want to say that you've been really clear and just, just deliberate about what we should do. So, I appreciate the professional advice there. So, I would make a motion to approve with the, with the condition that we bring it up to the city's standard for the road and, and, um, and also make a second entrance, so there's a perfect U or curve road. Again, I, I take the liberty of assuming that, that, I think we had good conversation last week that those were also, um, appropriate for the developer as well.
Okay, do we have a second on that one? Have a second on that motion? You want to hear it again? You want to state that again? We want to pay attention.
Oh, sorry. Uh, the motion is to approve with the condition of taking the, the current street up to the city's standards and adding additional entrance or.
Yeah, second.
Yeah. Onto Marietta Road.
And, and that's approving the planning commission recommendation plus those two additional conditions?
Well, I thought the planning commission recommendation was the policy, a sewer policy. So, I.
That was the only recommendation the planning commission had on that?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, that's taken care of, anyway. All right, we have a motion. With those two conditions, the street, Jackie Moore Lane, be brought up to the city's standards and that there be a second entrance on Marietta Highway, Marietta Road. Do we have a second? Well, I don't hear one, so I guess the motion dies for lack of a second. Does anyone else have an idea or motion? Thoughts? Something or another, I think he's got an idea, but you need to talk to Ken if you don't mind.
Uh, the applicant requests council consider tabling both of these cases so that they can address some traffic issues that have been raised.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
What is your recommended time, uh, length of time to postpone?
Thirty days, bring it back next month.
January?
Two weeks.
They, uh, have indicated they could provide additional information in two weeks.
Motion to postpone till next meeting.
Do we have a second? Mr. McGrew made the motion, Mr. Yorn seconded the motion. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay, we'll be tabled.
Motion to postpone item F also.
Okay, we have the same motion for item F. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. And that would be December the fifth. Thank you. All right, we have done G and H, so I guess, uh, okay, wait a minute. We got the discussion and possible action, a renegotiation of intergovernmental agreement for Cherokee County to conduct elections for the City of Canton. Mr. Pepper, you want to talk about that? Just tell it like it is. Come on, let's, let's hear it.
Well, so, I mean, I guess the question is whether or not we want to drop their agreement as written, or whether we want to counter that agreement. So, for instance, right now, if we hold a, an election in conjunction with a general election that the county is holding, we pay for half of the cost of the polling at each precinct. But we may not have half of the voters at that precinct that are in the city limits. So, a counter might be that they should prorate precinct costs on shared elections based upon the number of actual city voters within that precinct. Does that make sense?
It, it does. How, um, how many voters does the county have outside the cities, I guess?
Well, so, so, so for instance, in the most recent election, we had a total of, I think it was forty-one ballots at the Univeter precinct cast in the city election. It was one of the smaller precincts that came in for the city.
But there was no county issue.
There was no county issue.
County issue.
But in the case of like our brunch bill, uh, at the presidential election, one would have assumed there would have been more than forty-one city residents and more than forty-one voters at that precinct in a presidential election, and we still paid half the cost of that precinct for our one item compared to everything else on the ballot that was there for president, state senate, state house, county commission, everything else.
See, that's what it looks like would be coming up perhaps in March.
That is correct.
We'll have one issue on there, and it'll be a presidential preference primary, plus primaries for the Democratic and Republican parties on the state and county, uh, offices. So, it's very likely there'll be a very large turnout. I don't know if we could, you know, recommend that the, the fees be based on the percentage of, would, would, would that be? It shouldn't be hard for them to determine, should it?
No, and, and it, I mean, you may, it would be easier to do it on registered voters as opposed to actual voters.
Right.
Registered voters?
The number of city registered voters versus, as in a proportion to the total. So, if you have ten percent of the total voters, you'd pay ten percent of the cost.
And, and that would only be for elections that are shared with the general election.
If it's not, we have a full, full cost.
That's right. If it's not, we have the full cost. That's right.
I make a motion to try to negotiate that, um, policy.
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson made a motion, Mr. McGrew seconded the motion. Any other?
Question? So, um, what, what is the timing that we have? So, if we, so if we negotiate, is there timing? Is it just up until the next election for the primary in March?
It'd have to be a little bit before that.
Something has to be decided for the March.
Right.
Elections, which means next month, probably.
But, but technically, you could consider, so if, if we're able to bring something back, you could vote on it in a meeting or have a special call meeting, or, I mean, I don't see it as an issue, even if it went to the first week of January, so to speak.
You're talking with early voting and all that. You're going, you're probably in, we're going to be doing qualifying in January, probably. I mean, we're going to need to think about calling that election in December.
Well, you could, you could pursue this. Basically, what we're asking the staff to do is to negotiate and look, uh, see what you can get from the, from this perspective over the next couple of weeks, right?
Worst case scenario is they say no, we come back to the December fifth meeting, and we've said no.
Try.
Right.
Is the only, what are the other options hanging, Chad?
Well, the only other option would be we would have to get our staff prepared to host our own election, or we would sign the agreement as is, knowing that we're going to pay half the cost. What, I take that back. There is an additional option. The additional option would be that we could do like the City of Woodstock and have only one precinct for the next election. Our voters would have to vote in two precincts, though, one for the city election and their own home precinct for the general election. But we would only pay for the cost of our precinct as opposed to paying for half the cost of all six precincts.
So there's no way to take the small, like we've, we've talked about Univeter precinct is a very small representation of the city to divert them to another, another precinct? Because they're part of the city, no?
I don't believe they would mix and match it, mix it up like that. I mean, I think it's going to be all six precincts or none, you know, and what year did we change that?
So what, so what happens in Woodstock is the precinct is at the city library. Or the Woodstock library. So all city voters go to the Woodstock library to vote in the city election. They go to their own precincts which do not include the Woodstock library for the other elections.
I'm sure their turnout is, is pretty-
The turnout, turnout would be much lower in a, in a big election when you, when they have to go to two places, there's no doubt. And, and the reason we changed that back, how many years ago? Seven, eight years ago, maybe longer, I don't know, but we changed it because the elections were all being held at city hall and we changed it because it didn't, you know, voters would be able, sometimes they wouldn't get the message that you got to go to two places and all that, I mean, it was kind of very confusing. So they were able to go to their regular voting precinct and vote both for any county issues as well as any city issues, which was much more convenient for them and that quite honestly makes more sense even though it's more costly. I think do we need to negotiate the percentage that you were talking about based on the registered voters if we could do that? As opposed to what they're charging us now?
Last question be, is, we've talked about, is it like nine thousand currently when we do an election or?
Registered voters?
No, no, nine thousand dollars to do it.
The brunch bill election was thirteen or fourteen thousand.
Okay.
And we expected the most current election to come in closer to sixteen or seventeen. But again, we cover that entire cost because we were the only election.
Now, what's the, under this new agreement, have you forecasted what that might cost us?
The fees, the fees are higher
Yeah.
on certain things and some of that goes back to the fact that the next election will be on the newer voting machines and so they're expecting to have to provide additional poll workers at each location to deal with that new process.
It's like the definition of-
But again, we don't know what that-
Here's new technology, we need more people.
Well, but we don't know what that, we don't know what that cost is until of course after an election is, is had. I mean, it is, it is what it's going to cost. The problem is, should we be paying half the cost when we're not half of the use?
What have, what is the, what about the other cities? Holly Springs, Wolluska?
So I know, I know for a fact Woodstock is not signing the agreement. Reason why they're not, they don't have an election next year. So they feel like they can wait until the following year to, to figure it out. I don't know about Holly Springs.
Well, Holly Springs elections are in the even number of years, so they're, they're different.
How, how, how do they pay though, I guess would be my question?
Same, I mean, it's the same contract, right.
It is the same, okay.
But they're always a shared election because their city elections are on even-
With the county and state elections.
And I think they even have more precincts than we do, I think they're at seven or eight precincts.
But I think they're considering this prorata thing too.
Oh, okay, yeah, because if, I mean, if we're the only ones that pursue that, my guess is the county would say no. We're, Holly Springs, Wolluska, Ball Ground, they're all doing the same things, paying the same rate, so can't ensure it as well. We could try it though, I mean, it doesn't hurt to try.
I mean, the worst case scenario is you get a no when you approve this agreement in first meeting in December.
Try.
Yeah.
Not going to cost us money to try, is it?
No. What we may do is, um, we'll reach out to both Ms. Stansel and the Board of Elections because ultimately they will be the ones making the decision on. I believe Lewis Klein's the chair of that, so.
Yeah, we can talk to a couple of them, I think, okay. All right, so you're going to look into that, right? We, I don't think we need to vote to do that and bring something back in two weeks. Okay. What's that? Do we need to vote on that one? I wouldn't need to vote.
We're just directing him to-
Yeah, right, you just need to vote on what you said.
We do need to vote on?
Well, the motion was to do what you've now seemed to agree to, which was to go back with the change. Basically you're saying, you're essentially approving the contract with that change.
Yeah.
To take back to the county, right?
Okay, so we do have a motion?
Yes.
And, and who seconded that? Did you second that?
Yeah.
Who did?
I was like, oh my gosh, yes, I did.
Okay, you did, okay. All in favor?
I'm a-
Aye.
Pose? Okay. All right. Mr. Peppers? Nothing? Wonderful, wonderful, okay. Do we need an executive session for any reasons that you're aware of? Okay, all right, then.
Um, does, does Mr. Peppers have a report? You said you had no report, if you don't, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Where are we with the library?
Oh.
Am I you?
So, so-
She did have a report.
I'm sorry.
It was on the pack.
I was, I was, I was passed all my other service delivery discussions.
Right, I see what, what you've given us.
The library just came back and clarified what the cost was.
Right.
So in the initial spreadsheet, they basically said that we were paying for two employees to work on Sundays for four hours each. They came back and clarified that it's not two employees, it actually takes five employees to run the library for that day. One's a supervisor, they actually work five hours, thirty minutes, four thirty minutes after. And so when you, when you work out the math, it's a lot more appropriate what they're asking for than, than what the old one stated.
So, so it's going through?
Correct.
Okay, that was my, and the other question was, do you have anything to report on this service delivery strategy?
The county has reached out and stated that they believe they will have their response to the Form twos before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
So as soon as we receive a copy of that, I'll make sure I get that out. It's probably going to be the first week in December before the cities can get together with staff and review those.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? I obtain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Goodwin made the motion, Mr. Allen seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose no? All members voted for the motion.